It's seven o'clock. It's Monday, July fourteenth. This is the Select Board meeting for the town of Ashfield. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Anybody else have any recording devices, audio recording devices? There are six audio recording devices and one video recording device. Before the meeting started, we all had a chance to review and sign the warrant. So we cut the bills paid, we're a little ahead of time today, which is always good. Gentlemen, one thing I wanted to inform you is that, and I'm beginning to get this a little further, but in a discussion last week that I had with the town hall staff, we made out a notice on the warrant, there was $790.44 that came out of selected expenses, we had that in the account. And since we didn't vote any expenses for, if there were any expenses left for the town clerk, that, I felt that that was appropriate, we she's gone to a pretty much a week-long New England Town Clerk's Association meeting, pretty vital as well. She was, she actually was volunteering to pay it all out of her own pocket, but... So I hope that was alright, but I said that, that was definitely a good use while used in that, so that's why it was on the warrant, just in case anybody had any questions on that.
Can you bring the microphone closer to me because I'm going to be observing that?
It's on. Should be alright. Alright, minutes. Minutes, let's hit the minutes of June sixteenth. It'd be just a minute to review, like, a better amount longer, it was a couple weeks ago. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions?
No.
No, I don't think they do. Manus felt correctly.
Actually, I didn't stand for that, trust me. That's good, no problem. I'm looking for you to accept the June sixteenth, 2014 minutes as to...
Is that, is that happening? Any other discussion at all? All voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
Manus. June thirteenth. Ron, you weren't here for this meeting, is there anything that you need to be brought up today, Ron?
I think, it's up to me, I think we were on Coler's chair, out of it, leaving it in the sort of court. It does say Coler absent, but doesn't say, you know, any of my name. And then I had a, just a small scribbler, under the reappointments on page two or five, second paragraph from bottom, we talked about a memorandum from Coler which I submitted relative to town hall boards, but under the document list, there's ten, there's reappointments drafted by the town clerk. So, we do talk about the town clerk before we talk about Coler, you know, I think that's nine. So I'm a little, just a little, I think there's a missing one in between there. You see what I'm saying? Because it goes from preschool, way two, reappointments by clerk, and there's nothing by Coler. So I think Coler should be ten, and like nine A should be clerk something, you know, or change the number, somehow that messed up the document a little bit there. But that's alright, I understand, of course.
Well, that's right, because there's that document that you submitted, you must look at, was omitted from the document.
This is on document, which we listed there, yeah.
Todd, do you have any?
One little nitpicky thing on page one, very top, first sentence, Monday, June thirtieth, which should be today. There's a cut page here, I'm sure. On page two, one, two, three, fifth, paragraph down, we were discussing Ashfield community preschool. Sentence there says, "A link would to draft a letter which would explain the preschool, et cetera, et cetera." I did not listen to the recorded minutes, but I recall you volunteering to write a letter to anybody on current situation. And I think it was, you were asking Nancy Hoff to do that.
I actually gone through some notes on that meeting, not in time to say anything for it.
Alright, so we made that correction.
So it should be Nancy Hoff.
Nancy, yeah. And I think the gist of it was try and get some dialogue going with the district with regard to the funding, their part of funding preschool, why that's changed over the years. That's all I have.
In keeping with what Todd's talking about, when if you look on the document list, see number five is blank?
Right.
And then if you look at the Ashfield community preschool, that's document number eight. So I think all of the ones from ten to six, you can get pulled up one, and then mine inserted or something like that. I think it's an easy process.
Anything else, Todd?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as intended, the minutes for June thirtieth.
The second there. All voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
Yep.
One extension. Alright, through the minutes. Alright, let's have a, I guess it's under appointments. We had a meeting, I had a meeting, last Thursday, I believe. We spent better than an hour in the back room with the treasurer, collector, and the town clerk. Unfortunately, they can't be here tonight, and Mary and Lynn. And we've got, seems like that annual spot where public records requests and open meeting law complaints are creating quite a little bottleneck in the office. Of course, there's piles and piles of them. Right now, at our latest count, there are seven open meeting law complaints. And although five of them have been answered, they are now being appealed at the state level. So now, you know, the attorney general, the secretary of state, and so forth get involved, which takes up quite a bit of time there. And these public records requests, we get them out, we try to get them answered, but they seem to be revisiting themselves. So, the count that I had done today is that since the first of the year, there have been twenty-seven. A number of the requests cover multiple years, up to five, some of them up to five years or a couple of times. Many requests run to fourteen items or more. On many of the requests, the documents don't exist, and some appeals of documents are answered have also gone to the secretary of state, so it's being appealed at the state level. So, although I am certain that we'll not leave this, that we will survive this, in one form or another, it certainly is causing a bottleneck for a community that has so many projects that need to be done where we rely on staff. So, as much as I hate to say it, my personal feeling is, is it's time for us to step up and decide what we need for adequate staffing, to do the work that we want to get done. We set fairly ambitious plans for ourselves, at the town, which I feel are appropriate. But as far as just handling this paperwork and getting these out on a time limit, the hours that are used on this can't be used on anything else. They can't be used on talking to people about what they want to do about the sidewalks, or getting grant applications fulfilled, or doing some of the old routine paperwork, working on some of the information that a number of committees and so forth are... You know, we have a town office to supply that information to them on things that they want to get done. To a certain extent, this sucks the oxygen out of the room when we want to move on things like what our actions should be associated with the pipeline, and that type of work. Never mind highway projects and the rest of it. So I think it's a big discussion on where to go with this. One of the things that I mentioned prior is, I'm wondering, do we intend to do what a lot of other towns or all our surrounding communities have done as far as having, first off, instead of an executive administrator, actually having a town administrator? And second of all, what is the required staffing if the town administrator doesn't get tied up with this? In the short term, I mean, I'm hoping for plenty of discussion on this amongst the board. I hate to sound too much like the public bureau, but you know, maybe we need an information officer, somebody that just handles pulling this together. Now, this doesn't only have to do with the select person, alright, and the assessors who get these requests. The fire department has had a number of requests. The board of health, the fire department, select board, that covers most of them that are on the air. But the fire department is going to get any assessors. The assessors, I think the assessors, I got some information that they had, not a huge amount, but five over the past, is that correct? Five over the past two years, is that correct?
Information of...
Public documents.
What do you think about hiring a full-time temporary position or something?
I'm not sure, I mean, let's beat it around a little bit.
So let me ask you a little, just for a little information. When I was town hall leader, I saw the paper, in fact, I haven't touched it in how many months. So, are you including in the list the normal document requests, like when the newspaper person comes in and wants to see the agenda? Or is this a select few group of people who are doing this? Because it was during the time, during those two months, I would say ninety percent of them were by, you know, handful of people.
The twenty-seven that I, of the twenty-seven requests, it's three individuals. Is it the same individuals?
Yes. I know how percolate this, I mean, you've got the attorney general, secretary of state, you're down there, you're that one. There's not a lot of room. Mary, your salary, right?
On salary, thirty.
How many hours?
Thirty.
And what are you averaging for a work week these days?
In general, I put in forty and more. I try to go as long as I can to get as much of a work done as possible, but I must say, work is...
Would you say on average forty?
I would say on average forty, I've kept my hours since I started here almost four years ago, and can go over at some point, forty, I've done fifty, I've done sixty, but I would say, if you look at the time, forty, thirty-five.
So you're forty-five percent over what you're...
And I don't have any that I can call.
Just trying to understand how much breathing room you have to handle, because it sounds like you maxed out at the moment.
Just to kind of put it into perspective a little bit, I, before I became a select person, I went online and looked at all the public information. You can go to the state websites and see how many open meeting law complaints there have been against any town in Commonwealth. And at that time, which was a couple months ago, Ashfield was by far the highest, had the highest number out of all the municipalities in the state, including towns that are much, much larger than around Austin, et cetera. And it sounds like it's only interesting. So it's got to be an enormous burden on staff to handle that. I think, if we have to add a person, we have a person.
It's a difficult position description, you know, it's, it's attention to detail on this person is critical. It's not like they can just go and solve the problems, they can assist, but, you know, it might be, well, chief, what about this information, where might you have that? And gaining access to that sort of stuff, and staying on top of it in a real organized way, it's... I helped record some of the stuff on our own town website, because I was trying to assess how big the problem was. And it's, it fills a big brain basket, I mean, it's a lot of work.
I mean, the person doing it has to have the knowledge of the town and where it begins, so, you know, the additional staff person might not be doing that work, but might be freeing up someone to do that. Maybe they'd be doing more routine stuff.
I just don't know how that happens.
I don't do.
Well, I think, I think there's, in my mind, it's a two-stage. It's a short-term, trying to find a short-term solution, and institute a long-term solution. And the short-term solution to me would be if you could find the right person that could handle and answer these, and really dedicate their time to nothing else. Because I can see, one of the big things is, is that Mary or anybody in the staff, right, they come to work and they're going to attack this, right? We've got to pile them, and then there's telephone calls on, from contractors, or from vendors, or, you know, the general public comes in and wants information, or, you know, last week, Kinder Morgan calls, right? And all of a sudden, they want an appointment.
And we had the closing of the next meeting or anything after the meeting, there's always.
So all of these things take up time, that are regular staff that were set up to do something differently. So I wonder if finding the right person to come in, sort this out, get the answers, get that pushed through, wouldn't be, instead of an employee, wouldn't be more of a contractual person? Until we maybe should just not ask him to reinvent the wheel? Because it really wasn't that long ago, there was a long discussion in Ashfield about how the town administration should be run, and what the need was for, at that point, a town administrator and a little different type of organization in the office, in town hall. And I wonder if you had somebody as a stopgap to get this organized and get there, and then we would have time to decide if we needed to go back to that model?
It almost seems to be that that's a separate discussion entirely, you know, it's a different... You know, when you're talking about organizational structure and people's position, it's kind of a separate discussion from dealing with this problem, or deal with this work relationship, so.
But it may deal with that problem if we have that discussion, to have, to decide what we need for adequate staff. So, Ricky?
We are good hacks tonight, finance, we have the finance committee, and just a regular citizen. So I'm just a tad confused, and if I could, can I get some clarification from the board? First, it would be, I think, good to know, like, what the procedure is, like, what happens when one of these things come in? What actually has to be done? The files have to go through, can they be looked up on a computer, can we just push a button? I mean, I don't understand exactly what happens as this process, that's my first part, and then my second part, but...
Okay. Well, we don't have everything digitized, and for a number of reasons, we haven't invested the money to absolutely digitize every document that comes through, so it isn't really at all like going and pushing the computer. It is digging through the files, finding the paperwork. On a great number of these, from the review that I've had, it's even finding if the documents that are being requested even exist, to try and define those. I mean, imagine, you know, when you're looking for something, it's always the last place you look, right? Because you don't look any further, and if something doesn't exist, you're looking and looking, trying to find it. Okay? So it's not that, it's digging through the files and finding, and seeing if it answers the request. I think the other part of it, that I encourage you and anybody else to come in and look through the book of document requests and so forth that we've had, is they're large, they're large. I mean, I said on one of these, right, there are fourteen, some of them go back five years. I think the one for five years, did you say that was going to cost like $700 to...
$690.
$690 to produce everything that was asked in that request. So it takes up a lot of time, it takes up a lot of time, and we do our best to keep up with them, but they are on a bit of a statutory timetable.
Okay, so I guess one, where we could do is come and stand in, is I was in a meeting a while back, maybe a couple of years ago, when actually Paulette was still a select person, and she offered to put all of the historical meeting records and documents in a searchable database, so that when this stuff comes up, anything can be searched. And the rest of the board didn't want to do that, and I'm curious as to why? Because it seems as if it would make this process so much easier. I mean, now we're talking about hiring somebody, or you're talking about hiring somebody full-time, which costs a ton of money. At that time, all of this could have been done for free, for the town, and I'm not sure why it wasn't done.
Well, I'll go back over it, but my position as far as is not doing that is exactly the same as it was then, is that just before we had that discussion, we went to a whole night's meeting in Greenfield with attorneys telling us how important it was to make sure that everything wasn't available, that a great many documents need to be sorted. Although all information, it may be public information, or town documents, it's not all public information. So information with certain, depending on what you're discussing, names, addresses, if it has social security numbers and those sorts of things, so digitizing everything was not. And they urged us, they urged us at that meeting.
Okay, well, wait a minute, because I'm just trying to get the big picture. So, I remember that there was a time when things were given out to public, and names and whatever numbers were just crossed out, Redaktor, Blatman, Jean-Marc, Vatiga, whatever. That would have been done pretty easily, because we could take the minutes, take the documents, and then we could put it all, and put it on the computer, and this would be history. It wouldn't even be coming up today, because it would have been very simple.
I agree, that's right. Ricky, it was a generous offer, that Paulette made, in my opinion, it was an impossible offer. We have so much electronic information with documents attached, it's huge. At the same time, Paulette was working on the personnel board, trying to get the personnel document done, which came a year later, that was on our front burner, that document. The town had a bylaw that requested that, so that was first and foremost. I'm not sure that these three people who were making all these document requests would be that satisfied if information was easier to get. You would still see the requests, and let me also say this in case you don't know it. You're allowed to be compensated for the information requests that they're making, it's $690. But the amount of research it takes upfront to decide how big that order is, is phenomenal. You've got to go through so much data searching, and so on and so forth. It's a very, very cumbersome piece of legislation, and it can be crippling. And I've gone to Boston to talk to people about this, and they say there are people in other towns who do the same sort of thing, and it's crippling to those towns, but they say, you got to talk to the legislature. And I have talked to our reps, and it's a big problem. I don't think the problem's going to go away with access to information.
I'm not saying that the problem would or would go away, that's not my interest. My concern is that we're at a place where I don't think that we had to be. Because if this place, if all of this information was put on a searchable database, I mean, anybody in business knows that if you have a searchable database, it's a whole lot easier and quicker to get the information that's requested.
Well, you know, when you talk about a place we maybe could or could not be at, this is the place we are, and it really isn't, although it's gone on longer than any of us would like, I mean, the first lump of it was probably enough, it's not any different than it was three years ago. So, we're trying to manage it the best we can, and we have to have somebody before we start putting any amount of information online that's qualified to decide what should and shouldn't be on. We need post minutes of all the boards and so forth that have minutes to give us. So, Mary?
It would be pretty hard to give you an explanation of everything that's been involved in the documents that have been involved over the last three years. But having been involved with so many of them, I can tell you, we're not talking about putting all minutes and digitized forms. We're talking about any involved documents in Town Hall over many, many years, and when some of them go back five years, some of the documents go back 10, 15, 20 years. I know, I wish Karen, who's here tonight, she's not, I know in the past, she has looked at professional services to come digitize the town's records, and given them an assessment of what the kinds and numbers of records and so forth, and that would lead, it was at least 10,000 or 20,000. We could not have volunteers being here. For one thing, the office is a very difficult space to work in, as it is with everything that goes on in there, pulling documents. I, to my mind, it is not conceivably anything that could be done in any way in a short period by any volunteers. When professional companies come and do it, they move in big machines, hose down for a number of days, and it is a major event. To me, what is being referenced is not anything conceivably solving the problem for the town or even the nation.
Bill, can I see your hand up? I thought I saw a hand from that side. Paulette?
I'm thinking back to a prior meeting when you announced how much time of Mary's that consumed, backtracking to old minutes about sidewalks. And if we had had the meaning minutes in a searchable format, I don't mean a two-minute process. So, it's more than just answering public record requests or anyone else. This town needs to move to technology in a big way. It can't keep dragging its feet in doing this. Other towns, small, are already doing this. You can look at their websites and get this information. So, it's not like we're plunging ahead with technology the way nobody else is doing. We're trying to catch up, and we're not really doing it with all that. Because Mary's bringing lots of time researching sidewalks. It's a waste of her time when a computer can do that in relatively short period of time, if you would position ourselves to be able to do that. And that's what I was offering. I was not necessarily offering that every document in Town Hall, I was trying to get a handle on the minutes and the related documents that went with it, so people could self-serve, and then they're not asking and sending you good things if they can get it themselves.
Good point. I'm glad you made it. Alternatively, I want to tell you that none of these even vaguely approached as simple as the sidewalks. Not one of them. Not one of them talked about, you know, why a stop sign was placed in a certain place, why sidewalks were put in the way they were, none of that. These are all much more complicated and convoluted if you actually read the requests, which I know you have.
In case in point, the one for $670 or $90,000, whatever it is, I know what it's looking for. You should be able to go to your accounting system, look up the account, and see exactly when you processed that warrant, pull it and copy it. It makes absolutely no sense to me.
Sandy, I see your hand in the back.
Yeah, you were talking about one of the document requests, cost $600 and plus dollars. How many woman hours was put into that whole, that whole bill? And who, who did it?
Laura, you...
They took me in, I don't know, just to calculate. And yes, it is very simple to run the account, and you've got to be able to explain it. But if the question is asking for copies, this one's, copies of all originally invoiced vouchers, or their supporting documents, or expanding legal fees, from all the different, from January 1, 2009, to June 30, 2014. That is a lot of big and good files and making copies. And that's what costs $690 and 40 hours a month.
And how many hours do you work a week? Do you work 40 hours or do you have 35? So, it took you...
So, it took you a whole extra week?
It will take you, when I give them my, these three hours, you're in.
There was another hand in the back of the room. Paul?
I, again, I didn't really have much of a chance to put my thoughts together, so you know, we can go over ours. Like a lot of you who have been listening to these requests from here, a little alarm, the tone of many of them is not polite. It's a little concerning. And then I was thinking the other day, and I said, well, wait a minute. What all that they're really trying to do is raise a valid request, advocate more, insert residents if you ask them, so I understand most of the residents don't have a problem. Second issue, the second thought I had was that virtually all of these complaints and requests originate in the Ashfield House, either directly or indirectly. So, the root cause of the problem is the Ashfield House. My recommendation on this whole thing, since we've got, Lord, the last one contains allegations of voter fraud, there's been accusations of financial mismanagement on the guns numbers, correct? Denial of due process of people living in the Ashfield House. Somehow, expect me, these can accumulate to be serious allegations. If we're going to invest the time and the money, and we have already, to pay the lawyer additional time to hear, pay the legal payment, if we're going to pay the additional time to employees to do the work, why don't we put a little bit more into it and ask for an investigation for this whole affair? I believe the Select Board has requested investigation by the District Attorney, or the Secretary of State's office, or the Attorney General's office, and we even have a Inspector General as well, that deals mostly with the financial issues and contracts, definitely. The Secretary, the Attorney General's office actually has an office of professional integrity and responsibility, something dealing with public officials. The point is this, we've got all these allegations swimming out there about the town, one way or another. We need the state in these requests, correct? The Secretary of State's office knows more about this town than we do, by the way. The point is, why don't we request an investigation, but if people have the authority and the training to go back and review things? I'd say go as far back as the sale of the Ashfield House the last time, start with the particulars of the sale and go forward. And at the same time, they could come forward and they could interview the people who've made the complaints. I mean, seriously interview. Under oath, take their testimonial. In other words, make it a legal document. Maybe that'll get to the bottom. I, along the way, maybe what we'll find out is that we made some honest mistakes. Maybe not. It's an honest, I'm saying honest mistakes, everybody makes them. I don't think they'll find any collusion or conspiracy, at least not on the part of the county officials, et cetera. But maybe what they'll find along the way is there may have been collusion and conspiracy on the parts of others. Maybe that's a wake-up call. Maybe this will stop when this town pushes back. Maybe the time has come to ask for that investigation and push back.
Any other comments? Bill, I thought I saw your hand. It's not Mary, you're operating. I have something to say.
Any citizen, at least in the common, in this country, has the right to ask whatever documents they want. And it could be related to anything. And, you know, it could be a historian trying to find out what happened to a culvert in 1938. I use that because I have looked that up myself. But, so, looking, when you have a situation like this, one of the things that people ask is what, what, what are they asking? Is it, they're looking for crimes committed by town officials? Or are they looking for mistakes, as Paul mentioned, or maybe they're looking for man intentionally? The other possibility is that if people are involved, who know how Town Office works, know it's involved in this, the goal may be just simply to waste as much time of the town's as possible, to cost the town as much money as possible. Why they do that is beyond me, but I, my opinion is, with that to attack, it is to cause disruption, to cost money, and they're doing it in such a way that they know that it would take a lot of time. And as I understand, you ask for a set of documents, an estimate is created, given to the perfect board, when the money is paid, the documents will have been handled. But what has happened in some situations, they've asked for the estimate, they've gotten the estimate, and that's the ending. They don't pay, they don't come back, but it has then cost the town a lot of time and a lot of money, and there is no way to complain. And my feeling is that, you know, there's, I have been unable to find a benefit for anyone. I mean, then us, the town, the state, the world, to, I can't find a way that this whole process benefits anyone, whether it's document requests or meeting law violations. It is simply, in my opinion only, a malevolent attempt to cause the town harm.
Yes, sir.
Chef Juan, I'm curious to know, with suggestions such as Paul made, um, the table, not for me, and not for you, it's a quick suggestion, what is the process following, not on it, and I can be adopted?
I was at the Attorney General's office, maybe I wasn't speaking to the right person. I mean, this was three months ago now, all of that, and they didn't really feel that it was anything that they would take up. Now, maybe I was in the wrong office at the Attorney General's office, but certainly, we can do some research. Paul brought up the District Attorney's office, which certainly almost sounds like it would be easier to get to and probably a little more receptive to our needs, but if the board decides that that's a route that we need to go, certainly we could do that.
I think that there is an investigatory branch of the A.G.'s office. I think it's necessary. They don't always talk to the Secretary of State, they're either the executive functions up there, and they need to be brought together with perhaps some other county and municipal organizations with the time of Ashfield to get a clear picture on how much camera is going on with this whole thing. I think personally that we should do something, that this board should do something. I've been there two years, I'm in my third year, and it has not stopped. And it hasn't been, we haven't had any one person, the board, or those two or three other boards that are out there. And I think, I think we have to get quite a cease and desist on those three or four people who leave us alone. And if it's not possible, then yes, then we have to. I think we have to mitigate by hiring someone that does not respond to this sort of thing. It'd be a sad day if that's the case, but maybe we should have a select one meeting in Boston with the Investigatory branch of the A.G.'s office and say, oh, you know...
Sandy?
You said that there, it's a small amount of people that are creating the issue with having enough time to do appropriate town business. We all have the right to freedom, freedom of speech, that does not give us the right to yell fire in a crowded theater. Everyone has a right to get public documents, but that doesn't, in my mind, that does not give a person a right to have a town's government come to a grinding halt because of their requests. I think, I mean, I don't know that people are involved with this, but it just seems, listening tonight, that it's rising to the point of harassment of the town. And so, I have to agree with Paul, that I think it's gotten to the point, from what I could hear tonight, that the town needs to maybe look at the possibility of taking legal action and saying, you know, if you want these things, fine, but you'd need to come up with money first, before we go any further, something. Because if it's interfering with the critical duties of this town to its citizens, then that's wrong.
Well, my discussion last week with the staff, it is keeping us from working on all sorts of projects. I mean, every, pretty much every two weeks when we have a meeting, besides the regular paying the bills and doing that, that we can give the staff six or eight sometimes different projects, you know, let's research this, let's get an idea, let's communicate with, and this ends up taking priority over that, plus the regular day-to-day business that comes in, and the telephone calls you get, and then you have to answer. You know, like, the office is closed to the public one day, right? Every week or a month. After. And we still have to remember, my opinion is, we've got to keep, we've got to remember who our customers are, right? So, we have to be open when people need valve licenses, or zoning information, or need that sort of thing. Mary?
I think that there's a couple of issues, you know, there's line that's costing, and it will cost to address it. And I think Paul's idea and the follow-up on that are good, that there, we need to look at, you know, what are the recourse of the town? But there's one thing that it's causing with town employees, but you look around this room, and I don't see anybody that's not a volunteer in this town in some kind of way. And I have to say that being around the staff and other volunteers, there is a big climate of fear, and people aren't volunteering, or aren't looking over their shoulders, and aren't giving the energy that they'd like to. Because it's, you know, wherever the reality of it is, it's, it's a fear of, you know, having to spend all my time, I'll take it all my time, justifying digging up records from, you know, the Town Hall Building Committee, the Green Communities Committee, you know, that's not what I signed up for. And, and, so people are ducking. And I think that's going to kill the town. If nobody, if we don't have the volunteers, we don't have the town.
I think that's an excellent point, because a great number of people say, and on you would be great in this position. You're interested in that. You think I want to get in the middle of all that? And then some of them that are on committees and so forth can't wait till they get off because they say, hey, we've avoided this nonsense. I'm going to get out while the getting's good. So, anyway.
So, there's been a lot of frustration building up surrounding this issue for a long time, from all different perspectives, I'm sure. I think from my admittedly very cursory understanding of the law, there's nothing illegal. I mean, you can ask for as many document requests as you want, you can make as many complaints as you want, and there's really no limitation to any of that. So, it's not illegal, it's not, you know, you can, if you want, you can collude, and you can get together and say, you're going to do this, and I'm going to do that, and it's perfectly fine. It's within the scope of the law. And it's frustrating. And I think one of the frustrating things for everyone, kind of to the point that Bill made, is that at least at this point in time, if there ever was a point to it, if there ever was some desired outcome from it, it's pretty much lost on everyone.
You're here.
And that's just, it's frustrating, but if it is, then we have to deal with it. I don't think any sort of, with all due respect, Paul, I don't think any sort of investigation by anyone would change anything, because I don't think there's anything illegal that's been done. And whether it's frustrating... And whether it's frustrating or harassing or anything, that's within the scope of the law. So, I don't.
You know, even if it is legal, it should be.
That's, that's the legislation.
Well, then maybe we should just let them pay us to court. We should stop responding, make a statement and say, you know, pay us to court if you want to, because it's just not right. I don't care if it's illegal or not, it's not right. It just seems like there has to be some action, you think? We don't have to just go over.
Well, we're, we're following the law. And to stop responding, if we were taking to court on that, I think we'd pretty clearly lose. Change that may happen would have to be a legislative change. And if you Googled this, you can see where other states have had issues come up like this. And the counterpoint to it all is, you want to have Freedom of Information Act. You want to have access, anyone should have access, and government, government needs to be completely open and transparent.
Right.
Okay, nobody wants that to change. You have one, you have that, you have one, you haven't done?
I guess before we get too far down the road, I brought this up and it's on the agenda as, as an issue that we need to address. Have we got to the point where we have any idea how we want to address it?
I've been at it for 50 minutes, we're not even close to there.
I mean, I've, I've laid a couple of options as I saw them. And certainly I am not all sane, and I will. But this, this cannot, it will grind to a halt unless the three of us want to be full-time select. Selectmen should be able to come in, make some policy decisions, look down the road and be able to assign some tasks and expect them to be done in a reasonable manner. And this type of work is crippling the staff that we currently have. And one thing that brings in my ear is that on May 3rd, that town meeting, as popular as some of the elected officials may be or may not be, the staff in the town hall, from the response at the end of town meeting, means that they are much more popular than all the rest of us put together. The people in town very much appreciate everything that's gone. But this, you know, going, going from a situation of trying to, enact some progress and move the town forward to being stalled in this mire of bureaucratic experiment is, is, we can't have everybody in this situation. Because it disrupts the entire office. It disrupts the entire office. And we need to have a plan, at least short-term, to relieve this, in my estimation.
What I would suggest, we can have people quit, in my opinion, personally. And try and have people step forward to replace them because of the harassment that's going on. And I sincerely take the fear of a few emails from Boston, pick a date, two or three months out, I don't care what it is, and, and let them know the urgency.
Yes, it is a lie, I agree with you about that. But when you look at the fact that three people, over the course of these three years, are responsible for this, whatever this is, and some of those emails are, as I said, big news, as you can imagine, give me all of the emails and all of the documentation associated with this over the last 15 years. You know, and, and they're just, I mean, and, and yes, you have to redact information. It, I feel it's our responsibility as this city board, and I'm in my last year, to, to stop this, to stop. I think, I can't, it's very difficult to turn this sort of thing over to anyone who's the same person. I mean, we can't just say, let's go on with business, let's, let's do something different. There has to be, things change because people push the change. And I don't think we should sit back, I think we should go out.
I'm more than willing to meet with anybody, anywhere, anytime, and discuss anything that will help solve the problem. But I fear that it's not a short-term, there's no short-term solution for a legislative route. Okay, but it can't, it's never been short, okay? My, my concern, and I, and I don't want to plant a seed, but if we hired someone for 40 hours to deal with this issue, we'd see an increase in 40 hours worth of requests. I, I don't think it will ever, who knows what the breaking point is? Who knows what, if there's any end, you know, who knows? We really have no idea what the goal is. And, or, or even how to help the people get to the place they want to get to through these tactics. I have no idea, no idea.
Jim.
I'm just trying to understand where your abilities as a select board and, and the legislation of freedom of information begin. So in other words, the mechanics of this seems to me about what? They come and request all this stuff, but they don't have to pay for it. They don't have to post a bond, they don't have to put a mortgage ask for a pound. They don't have to put anything on the table that shows good faith in their request. So my question is, is, are there mechanics, you know, on a judiciary level, that you as a select board have authority over that doesn't violate Freedom of Information Act?
Good question. Bill, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I think Todd is right. You're not gonna get another legal argument either with a direct request or a meeting or libel. You talk about it in public in an attempt to expose or shame or make people guilty. That won't work because you're dealing with people who just don't care. I think the idea of putting some, committing some money might have some impact if, and this is a question, this would be a question for the Secretary of State, is can you say, well, Paul, we've done these kinds of things before, this will cost between $600 and $800, money in that part, and we will get you as many documents as we can for this amount of money and let you know how much more it's gonna be. So they're actually committing something other than time. Because I, I don't see any other way of dealing with it. You're dealing with sort of a political social, doesn't feel any conscience, doesn't feel any guilt. And what they're doing is clearly, I mean, there's a phrase for it, it's called abusive process. Laws are written to be followed by rational and sane people who understand the purpose of the law and stay within it. Once you get down to the level of nitpicking and coming up with every single, finding every single loophole you possibly can or anything, now you're turning into lawyers. That's what they do, certainly in civil cases. And that's what I suspect is being obstructed here, is to frame things impossible to use any loophole they can. But you can't shame them, you can't make them feel guilty, you can't make them stop. But what you can do conceivably, if I were to again ask the Secretary of State, is make them spend some money. Because I don't know of anything else that's gonna reach then with, um, standard appreciation.
Well, we've talked about it here for an hour now. As much as we would like to simplify the law, there's really nothing simple about it. I mean, it gets very clear and direct, you know, on what you can and cannot do. So it leads me back to my original question and, and the reason for bringing it up. Is there anything we should explore to relieve the staff so we can work on all those other projects that we so dearly know that we need to compete? I mean, and, and I know that we're not the only organization that gets it with this. You know, I mean, they're, they're, I don't know, while you were away, if you were aware of it or not. But, you know, there were some requests made and communication and so forth that, you know, people were wondering there for a while if it was gonna cost us that $375,000 grant to fix Smith Road. You know, because they couldn't decide which stones should go in place first, you know, the question was, you know? And it, and there were hours, payroll hours spent on that. That was the most foolish thing in the world. I mean, to say that we weren't gonna do the FEMA part of the project first is like saying you're gonna build the Golden Gate Bridge from the center and work out. Exactly like that. So it, it, I don't think anybody, the three of us, any of the other officials elected or appointed, and certainly not our employees, I really don't feel that any of them mind working. But working and having, at the end of the day, feel like they really accomplished something is, is I think what many, if not all of us strive for. So, I don't know, you guys, you guys need to come, give, give us some direction. We gotta come up with some kind of.
What about, what about an information person? An info officer, short-term, just to get us over the line?
This is sort of database and, and querying sort of level of stuff. It's not just word processing. You really have to access stuff quickly and different complaints and papers filed. Everything's driven by database-related stuff. But I mean, I, if, if we're trying to dig out a hole quick, and we're planning to go to the A G's office and the investigatory, the branch of it for two or three months, which I think we need to hit the root causes of.
I have no problem.
We still have an urgency here today on our lap. So I would support any ideas for information and not so keen on the concept of the town manager, because you just have a new target at that point.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying that that's kind of a long-term thing. I mean, if, if we don't get an appointment in Boston for three months, that means we can't just stop now for three months. So I'm thinking that there, there could very well be people at the call that could help us get in touch with professional-type people, maybe on a contractual basis. That doesn't mean we won't have to have a special town meeting and vote money to pay for that, for somebody to come and try to get a grip on this and keep working on it in the meantime, in the short term, until we.
Well, are you receptive to run with this?
I, I agree.
So I'll make a, I'll make a motion to get it on the table. You guys can object if you want. But I'll make a motion that we appoint the chair to explore opportunities to get a lunch around this problem. I'll give it a broad enough spectrum to give you a lot of latitude. I like the idea of going for a cargo, so, but you might know, someone might say, this town, this is how they resolve it. I had nothing to do with for, so take the initiative, come back to this board with some recommendations.
So really just continuing to investigate the possibilities?
For the next meeting.
Is that the kind of breadth of your?
Yeah.
So, so no definitive action, nothing actually, other than more investigation? True, let me just clarify.
Well, I can do a modifying motion.
No, I just want to be sure I understand that, what the scope of the motion is.
So maybe I. Let me add this, is that now that we're right on the door band of closing out 2014, fiscal year 14, no matter how hard we shook the trees, there's less than $1,000 that we're gonna have to have a special town meeting for to come back and resolve some of those accounts. And although there's no rush to do it, it seems in my mind by the time we want to get our finances certified by the state and have the auditors look at it, that it would be better. It's gotta be done, it needs to be done sooner instead of later. Is that, we set a tentative date for a special town meeting, not in two weeks, but maybe in a month. And between now and then, come up with what we would like to present as far as how to handle this. I mean, we should have enough information, maybe a game plan put together to, to move forward on it. Because we can't ignore it.
No, no, but I, I like the idea of putting those building blocks in place further ahead so that when it is time to act, we can actually do something and not have to wait for another two weeks or wait for another two weeks.
My only concern is that the preparation of such limited time is actually meaningless, that if you go knocking on the door for a car on your own, and then because we don't have any more green point person, I go knocking on the same door, we're wasting some people's time. So I don't know, I don't, I think putting a person in charge of it isn't such a bad idea to keep reporting back to this group.
That's fine.
Otherwise.
And if something comes up urgent, I can always call another meeting.
Absolutely.
An extra meeting to, to discuss that.
So your motion amended to, if I understand right, your motion with an amendment to also include a date for a special town meeting? I'll send it out.
Okay. Well, someone got to receive.
Wait up, Lynn. You're it.
Go to the point chairs before our 27th, and on the issue for the next meeting, also set the date for the town.
Sure, let's, let's, let's set the date, while what do you? But we set the date for Monday, September 8th. That'll give people time to maybe get some vacations through and try to work some of that. And, and yet give us time enough to have some details. Should that be all right as far as getting those bills straightened out? So do you get that set, September? Then that would give us time to post it, we can post that the 25th.
Um, tonight if you have one quick question, what's the advice on town council on this?
The advice on town council? To find the way to keep peddling through it according to the law. So this, what I'm discussing, what the board's discussing right now is trying to find a way to do that. Until we get a chance to get off the treadmill. We got a motion and a second. I really shouldn't be entertaining, but since I already did it, you've been so quiet, and the first time you raised your hand, go right now.
It's simply the first time. Has, you know who the three people are. Have you ever sat down with the three people face to face and talked about this?
No.
Why not?
There's enough correspondence, it seems as though we should be, if, if you read some of the correspondence that you had, you would pretty much know you were going into hostile territory.
So, I mean, you know you're hostile territory, so you get the territory right here.
Laura, you got one more thing?
Can you do a special town meeting early in September? Would you like to circle out and get the three patcher covers if you want?
Well, there's a thing like vacations that get in the way of that, Laura. I mean, I, I would be more than happy to, uh, have these guys discuss it without me around, but. but... I think by the looks I'm getting.
Um, I think we appreciate how unsafe this would feel as a one official and also that people have a good feeling somewhere else. Have you ever considered mediation, have the both sides willing to mediate or to have a perhaps public discussion or structured discussion with a neutral observer who's not part of Ashfield or, um, you know, people who's willing to certain conditions as part of that deal? It might be worth exploring.
Good point. All right, so, so the motion, you want to raise it back to us?
Uh, motion point chairs for a person to get a hand on the issue in the next meeting, set the date for a special town meeting, Monday, September 8th.
So it's a motion, a second, and let the discussion, you. Although the favor say aye. Aye. Although opposed, unanimous. All right, very good. Hour and 10 minutes, that's pretty good. We have some appointments, although Todd and I did our best while you were gone, there's a short page of appointments that still need to be made here. You have the spreadsheet. FERC Council Representative, Mary Fitzgibbon. Treatment Plan, Emergency Backup Operators, Damon Florell and Alan Nichols. Police Department, there's Blue Officer James Burner. Auxiliary Officers, we leave, uh, Montos, David Schur, and Kyle Walker. And Conservation Commission Scribe, Annie Maddox. You have a motion?
These are all one-year?
One-year. You move?
I did.
Second.
Any discussion? Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. UMass Flood Mitigation Study Participation, that was in the back of the book here. This came up two or three months ago, yes? Are we looking for somebody, Mary, to, to actually fill it out and do it or?
Actually, I asked to get it from a gentleman because, uh... Yeah, the, uh, the people doing the study, I don't know how I got, I think it was the regular email that came through the slip or something. And so I emailed back and said, you know, we might be interested. So then they've hammered me with emails, but I, I think it would be interesting to participate in this. But I didn't know, I mean, I'd be happy to do it with them. I'm interested in the subject and I'm interested in finding out if their study could somehow benefit us in terms of flood mitigation. But I don't know that I'm the right person to be answering this or having an interview with them. There might be somebody more appropriate in town, whether it's, uh, Tom, Wasan, or Doug Field or somebody else who, because what they're looking at is like current state, what do we currently do or would we currently do in terms of flood mitigation in an event? So probably, I'm probably not the right person to answer this question.
I just suggest that you really does a connection for you, because the emergency mitigation plan, that was just approved.
Right.
Ties into this.
Right.
So...
Doug, Doug tied him back there. Since we're talking about you.
I mean, if I heard.
Why?
Would, would you be willing to be interviewed for a study? Um, not you personally, but they're, they're looking for town responses to flood hazards and what, how the town would respond to a potential flood events and things like that. So being familiar with the emergency management plan, perhaps you and maybe others in town, I don't know, could be interviewed for this study that UMass is doing. Do you have any questions?
We have to have that plan anyhow.
No, no, but this, this is the study.
There's no problem.
Give them your hand.
This is a survey, Doug. Someone's got questions.
Well, I talked about this kind of notification from the federal government that our mitigation plan has been approved. So now we can give money to the federal government. You got a sign, but I'll get to it.
You get money, it's not a bad thing.
Well, now we can give money, if we have an emergency or something, uh, we have the authority to give the money to the federal government.
So Todd, you want to work with Doug?
Yeah, that's fine. And I have to, motion's necessary, I just want to make sure that no one objected to us participating in this stuff.
I thank you.
Thanks. All right. Easy to get shuffled. All right, so Mary, discuss Kinder Morgan Presentation Offer and Schedule. I remember right that offer came like last Wednesday or Thursday, maybe it was?
It might have been Thursday, I think it was Thursday. Offered to, um...
Anything, anything in print or all on the ball?
No, well, it was, um, it was half a line on the email, uh, with the select board be interested in Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of the next week.
Which is this week.
Which is this week. Um, and then I turned the email back, said Monday be possible, and the answer was no. And then after talking to the chair, talking to you, I sent another email back and the question, whether we date out a little further and, and got me to sit back so far.
Well, it sounded like if we couldn't do it according to their schedule, they weren't interested.
It was, it was kind of short notice. When I wrote back, I had to explain that the way a select board works is the meetings have to be posted and so forth and so that could, but I had explained that before.
Well, I remember it had to be Thursday because we were within hours of wanting to post the agenda for this meeting. Bill, since we're on the topic of Kinder Morgan, there's a FERC meeting?
On a week, two weeks, Thursday.
A week from this coming Thursday.
Correct. Twenty-four, six o'clock at D C C cafeteria. We have the largest space they have and we have overflow space available. It would be, it gives us a bit to prepare, it would be part of the presentation we intend to, and like that.
Well, it's up to them to reply back.
Mary, in your response to them, did you tell them of our special town meeting? Going out, you just told them?
No, I didn't tell them.
So there was no way they said, oh, they're going to answer our family?
Uh, and this is, I think that, I believe this is someone who's just out in the field in a, in a setup, who I've heard from before, just very angelic.
Were they requesting a meeting? It was not?
No, no, I think I...
Actually, it was to make a presentation?
It was to make a presentation and the question was, would the select board be interested in a presentation next Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
Is your sentence said, uh, no, I can't do it that way?
No, I, I, I talked to the chair.
No. Okay. No, if they wanted to discuss it and get an hour of discussion and an agenda and... But I mean, I'm, I'm hoping this board would be open to it if time allowed and we could post a meeting, because that's our influential role.
And, and just because I didn't have an answer today, so I may have on tour, the next day offers to have dates, so I guess I think might be to be prepared to pick a date if so.
Yeah, but my position is to have to work around our schedule and, and what we need to do.
Right, and the, and the reason I get contact before is because they contacted us once before, a while ago, to ask if, um, if they could come to select board meetings. So gave the select board meeting, the next select board meeting, it can still be posted. They said no, that I'm moving to the next block. So it's, I think it just goes up every so often.
What could happen though, is if, I'm just working on a little collision which might be okay, is they don't give back the way. We send out letters that I see in our agenda tonight, which says, please see the attached, and they might say, well, thanks for the invitation, we're offering, well, why not come to the town actually? I mean, right, if, if the, the issue weren't very clearly set to oppose and put it in words like that, so, um, I don't know if they'd be up for it, so. And I don't know if it's necessary that that's what we do. Thank you.
So I guess, I guess my question was just the board want to send a message that if there is another offer of time. Time they offers apparently very, very little and far too often offers are being, um, so if they were to get back, I assume it would be what's been before, very little notice, maybe just enough to post a meeting.
My feeling is that I'm, I'm open to it and I'll leave a one little get the call, but we need seven to 10 days to set up a meeting and have the rest of the agenda clear or have a special meeting till we got to find out who can attend and that sort of thing. So, you know, listen call and, you know, wait for...
Yeah, and wait, I have...
We got to post the 48...
Well, give them the dates of all the, give them the dates of all the select meeting board meetings from now until the end of time.
Oh, I did that at the beginning of, I did that in the May or the beginning of June. So there's not a lot of communication, but my sense of it at this point, because I had that conversation, gave dates all the way out, is that it tends to be a very last-minute call.
Well, I personally don't think we should stand on our head for this post. It might be the way that town has directed us that path. However, out of courtesy and respect to the process, I would be remount to it, but I want to be at that meeting and I don't want it to be a last-minute sort of...
Throw in the bag.
Too open, you know, something like that. So it'd have to be a full mark in my hopes.
There's a quick, uh, actual residents who are involved in this issue, will seek to present as valid at that meeting. So I want to make sure that you are giving yourself a lot of time to...
That leads back to my thinking that it needs to be seven or 10 days for us to get, to have that many cards in the deck.
Is that enough?
I'd like to know where the ace is at.
It's going to be what, five or 10 minutes? Five, 10 minute discussion? By the other side, Frank?
Well, Mary, I agree, man, if that's the case, we should tell them that the meeting would have both sides present, so I think they'd be knowing that in advance.
And that it would take them in another seven to 10 days to go through the process to set it up, so they wouldn't have to give us a date that allows for that.
But we'll be looking forward to seeing what D C C does. Are they going to D C C?
Yeah, it's Kinder Morgan's, right? We have no access for it.
Because the last one, several times you go, they didn't show up.
No, there is that. We can't see. Well, wait, you're talking about yours, but there was also a forum that they invited to that show.
That's right, I associated that.
In our case, we can't see the meeting because there was, you know, the violation we're very aware of. And since we are allergic to those, the answer is either way.
Yeah.
The format of meeting in Greenfield is not to be a debate, but to be an information meeting. The wisdom of Kinder Morgan has to say whether we believe any of it or not, people may have their own mind, but we surveyed a lot of people and got questions which knew everybody had. And we presented them, those questions, asked them, covered as many as they put in their 20 minutes presentation or whatever they had. After that, we will follow up on anything that we don't feel that appropriate answer and then questions will come from the others. But it was not set up as a debate. There, there are good enough, you know, we, we think there's enough of presentation by both sides and the four of us, if you wanted one menu for them to tell us whatever it tells. And they try and, you know, give us more and better information that goes on their website, so that, um, I'm not expecting much.
That's a little bit of a pessimist, I guess.
Well, see, one, one of the, one of the things I, I would sort of describe in a sense of realism, one of the things that council governments is intending to do is once the ordinance file, uh, opinions are requested, is that we intend to request to be what is known as an intermedia process. And if the council is seen as a, an anti, you know, a closed-minded, anti-pit on Anthony, there's no way that you can get that designation from the courts and from FERC. We've run into this situation before when we were in the areas of anti-commissioning and licensing and bans and stuff here, so we're taking a deliberately neutral approach, still attempting to get information, but not a confrontation or anything like that, so that you can hold our fire if it was, if it formed a public opinion or comment.
Another discussion on that? Okay. Police chief job descriptions, you have, you sent us?
I sent them out to you. There were two versions, 2010, that last one, and the one that was 2007. You want copies? I think because I sent them, I...
I could, I could, for whatever reason, I could not download the format that was in when I went to download.
It was a D O C, so you had to have the most recent version.
I know, so here's, here's 2010 and here's 2007. I can go get some extra copies? Would you like some? Those? Do you have, do you have...
Well, someone's reacting is that, that, uh, the, this long one here was built around the last chief or built in anticipation of fire, uh, which was a 40-hour, you know, full-time chief. The position that we have is a part-time chief, which is 38 hours. As far as the state, a, a full-time chief, uh, the state has requirements that they go to full-time police academy. A part-time chief does not need to do that, does not have to have that level of training. So to think that the chief position that we have now fits into this long, I think it's six pages. The six-page job description is probably not, doesn't reflect the fact of what we're of what we're doing and what the town has hoped to do. Did you get a chance to?
I did. I have some, you know, tricky little criticism. I mean, I like some in one and some in the other, and it's really hard to get through this. I think my biggest comment on both of them is, I thought they were too, too directed for a person with such authority. For example, it says in the two thousand and ten one, you know, the chief police is the chief administrative officer of the actual department, the chief is responsible for management supervision and effective and efficient operation of the department. You know, those are, yeah, I agree with all that, but then they get down to saying, you know, have you gone holster, not really facetious, but some of the details in there, I'm saying, are we a strong police department or weak police department? And I would have taken probably a third, a veto on these two, just because you put someone in charge of a police department, if they're qualified, they should do the running day-to-day affairs of that police department, including professional development, you know, officers under them and so on and so forth. It seems too detailed.
And there's one thing that clearly was a red flag for me, too, is, you know, display your firearm, was one of the things. And I was trying to figure out, is that a standard line in all police chiefs' description from the state or something? Or why is that in there? It seemed alarming to me. I mean, not that they shouldn't be displaying their firearm, which is fine, but is that supposed to be written into the description?
Right, to order to do that from now. There's a couple of thoughts. We're a little short on the right, we're a little short on the right of the law. I mean, she just wants to get to, so we...
Yes, Ricky?
We took this up the other day at the...
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be there, I called a lot of time.
Okay, there was only three of us there.
Oh, there were only three?
Wayne, Chris, and Vanessa.
Okay.
And we had a lot of questions, because originally, this is supposed to be a select board before it came to us, but it came in reverse. And since you weren't there from the board, we had a lot of questions that we couldn't answer before we started going over this. One of the first questions was, we weren't really sure if this long one was an actual job description, because it seemed like there was a lot of things in here that didn't fall in the job description category. So we weren't sure if this was written as an actual job description, and by whom it was written.
Right, and I see, and at, and at the end, it has, you know, if you're, you know, the application process and so forth. It almost seems like maybe it was more of an advert, a detailed advertisement.
Right, because there's a part on the first page that talks about a full-time position, salary range up for this and this, and so it was a lot of this. Then we realized that this was so long, and we really didn't think it was a good idea for us to go through it and take apart and combine the two, or have it go on before it came here. So we're expecting to get it back after it goes, you know, after tonight, so that we can ask questions and put in a lot of things that we look at and...
Well, there's so much, and we've had so many other things. I don't know tonight if we're going to be able to call mingle these at all, but maybe we could get some notes together. If we could all get some notes to Mary, this was, we could put those, kind of draft a first copy out of it. And I put something on your plate, or plate.
No, it's fine, it's fine. And you won't have a copy, I'll send you a different electronic copy than your son did.
We have a joint meeting coming up, I know it's to discuss something else.
No, this is the person out there, and they're checking with my name.
With person number?
All parties.
Yeah, we have a joint meeting with person number. And I know we're supposed to be discussing different documents, but we could also probably talk about this, too, if we put it down there.
Well, I think we might have a meeting on the fourth, yeah, the twenty, twenty-nine.
I have a small request that's really particular about. Anything that is a document that is going to be reviewed and time spent on it, in the footer, put a version number. And the way I do version numbers, it doesn't have to be this way, but I say two thousand and fourteen, two zero, one four, oh seven, fourteen. Okay, that way, and it's in every single page, because I've gotten documents on this board where some things are one thing and other things are another thing, and they're being, like, co-madeable.
And as with this, I expect that they're documents that were made over time, I didn't take any operations.
But that's one that I would like to see on the board.
As we go forward, I will...
Right in the footer, every page, you know, so that we know we're looking at the same document.
Please, just make sure it doesn't get locked in time. So, could we agree, at least get some points back, and that maybe Mary could merge into, at least try to narrow it down, what we want to get to on this, or? I, I have not gone through it to X out what I think needs to be Xed out and to make additions.
Right, so let me just clarify, because if you want to do it tonight, I would...
One of these, you had to hand type in, so you had an electronic version, right? Because the original must have been done on a slipper or something, if you didn't have it.
Should I go get a working copy, a working copy I brought out?
Wait a second. How do we start to see that?
If we're gonna do it verbally tonight, I would get another copy, if we're gonna do it verbally.
Hold on. Let me give you a general comment, Mary. I don't think we're going to do this specific comment. But the general comment, because I actually like the layout, not the detail, but the layout of the two thousand and ten one. I like the way that they talk about the basic functions in paragraph form, and then they talk about essential duties, those all make sense to me. And they talk about personnel duties, and then community duties, kind of rule. I did agree with you, but it was too lengthy for me, it's too much. But I liked the way that this thing lay out, and, you know, there's some ambiguity in it, except me, because I like it on a regular basis. I'm more specific than that, I'd say on a quarterly basis. You know, regular could be weekly, could be monthly, could be anything like that, but let's get some detail in there. So I kind of like the layout of the two thousand and ten, but I have issues with the details. So if there was a starting point, my recommendation is to start with the major categories of the two thousand and ten one, and go from there, try to put to us in different problems, maybe for different things. And I like the idea of running this through the personnel board, too. I mean, that's their job, and it's their big recommendations for us, and these are changing times, and positions can change, you know, the description can change.
A couple of things that I remember that we discussed were, one of them was that numbering these things might put the town, either the employer or the employee, some kind of difficulty in the future if something wasn't mentioned? That actually is on the job description, or that should be in the job? Or if it wasn't, one of these one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, the person that brought this up thought that a job description should have been numbered.
Right, at the end of the, I think of the same one, let's say something like, all of the above duties don't preclude you from other duties that you're responsible for. So it's like, why do you think so? You can't have it both ways, you know, I don't think you can.
We also are wondering if the two thousand and ten one, in fact, that wasn't meant to be a job description, did go to Tom Potts' office. And was it accepted by the board?
I talked to Priscilla after your meeting, you had answered the question when you had the meeting. Talked to Priscilla after the meeting, I was looking, well, you're in the meeting. I didn't see any indication that it had. However, Doug, I know you were on the search committee, and one of the things I was going to credit to you was calling you and asking if you had a memory of whether the search committee might have sent it. The select board did not.
Mary, what is, sorry, was this submitted by the search committee? Was it submitted by...
I don't know, I actually got it from, I thought I got it from Priscilla or Priscinova originally, but I don't, I don't think so. I think that's the one that you also had in the material, but I don't know. And so I guess that...
But it was referred to in the select board minutes, didn't you say that this was referred to in the select board minutes at that time?
Yeah.
But it never mentioned going to town.
No, and I found the sort of starting mention and the final mention went through.
So this is a good time to do it.
Long for the rest of the personnel board, and the one we probably others have to do.
Right, so it's a, right, it's a good time to do it, regardless of what the history is.
Doug, you got... I got a question. Have they, has the personnel board talked to the police chief at all about the job description? This bothers me, because when I was fire chief, not this personnel board, but the one before that, put out job description for a fire chief, and did not come anywhere near what every fire chief in Massachusetts with job description was, because they had never talked to the fire chief.
Well, it hasn't been our responsibility yet to do this. It was something that was a responsibility of the board, as far as I know, and then was coming from personnel, the personnel board. I just hacked this and then over it last week, because we had to postpone it to this...
Maybe one of the biggest things we can do is come up with a flow chart. I think that is to have the information. If we're gonna get through this in a timely manner, so it doesn't end up being a career for four or five generations.
Well, this is hard to combine the two.
No, no.
This was tricky.
I also think that it's part of the process that the whole personnel board manual and the job description should be available for review by everybody. We have supervisors mentioned and protocol for complaints and things like this, and they should know this, they should have input to that. So it was always in my mind that that would be part of the process at some point, that there'd be a formal invitation to review it. And at that point, if there have to be changes made, you know, that we need to, someone needs to enlighten us, you know? Is that someone who's...
And we did have a, a discussion at the meeting, not his app, about this information being available electronically, instead of having to publish a whole book for everybody to review to get ideas back. And of course, we haven't, we haven't finished our due diligence in going through the manual.
Right, and we also did go, you know, talk to people in the offices and different positions at different times about what they did.
Well, I think clearly, going forward, everyone would have to include, you know, every position.
Do, the meeting night, would you set another meeting?
Oh, actually, no, we decided that we didn't need another meeting before the meeting on the twenty eighth. Because the only thing that happened that we could have gone over was the manual and we depend on, or not, until we have the two guys. Now, if this came back tonight, perhaps we could get another meeting going before that meeting, the twenty eighth, and have a little more to come. Two of us, but...
That's just...
But this is a lot to combine these two, it's kind of complicated.
It'd be one thing if one was seven pages and the other was a page and a half, then you could...
Right, well, we started to go through it, you know, like, one by one, connected, but then we realized that we didn't even know where this one really came from.
And the formats are entirely...
And the formats are different, and so it just didn't make sense, because there were plenty of open questions.
But maybe one of the, one of the dangers, you know, if we want to do a forward diversity and get these projects done, is to agree on, really, a flow chart on, on who's gonna do what, and how it's gonna flow, and how fast, you know, we can get back if we have that kind of laid out. Instead of us sitting here trying to put these together, which is pretty much impossible, you already, even though there are only three of them, but it's...
It's not possible, but we just didn't realize we wanted to do it without having the answers first, because you guys had gone over it. That's what we were told to wait until you were over it.
So why don't we go over these, if we can do this this week, and just email Mary?
Oh, I don't think they could do that. The three people working in two documents, she will be so overwhelmed with that. If we did it in, you know, some document management system, in written comments, and they'd be like, oh my God, I think...
Well, not only that, that would constitute deliberation, it's not, we can't do that. We can send our comments one way, we can't get feedback from our other.
And she asked, I thought I... Still, I mean, I felt maybe what we were suggesting wrong is that I use a different color for each person.
And you'd please do that. It's seven to ten pages long, and for you to think all three of our comments like this, it'd be, it'd be a huge thing. I think we ought to go to the personnel board, and they ought to come back, consolidate, you know, trim down, let us look at it back.
Well, it's a lot for the personnel board, without having, without having some direction from the select board.
Well, I guess one question would be then for some direction is, which one do you want sort of to be the basis of it, that we would be able to put some of this in here or some of this in here?
Personally, I like the two thousand and ten one, the direction of it, more than the two thousand and seven.
So you like the outline version?
I like the concept of flow, I have problems with some of that.
So I'm looking at the, next Monday, the twenty-first, or Tuesday, the twenty-second.
Are you talking to the personnel?
No, I'm talking to the select board. You're gonna be gone next week?
The personnel board was talking, I think, about something the twenty-fourth, maybe, that we could, what's the date, the day?
Thursday, the twenty-fourth.
So we were thinking around that, if we had something that we needed to do. If you wanted to, we probably could get together on the twenty-fourth and go over this thing and combine it, bring it together.
Twenty-fourth is the night of the pipeline discussion now at TCC, and I'm also, I've got a FERC inspection on program before that, so, yeah, unless you're gonna be there at ten p.m.
I'm just, I have a question.
Right, oh, I thought you were talking, combine.
Yeah, the twenty, the twenty-fourth is busy. Doug, would you be willing to ask that?
Yes.
You and I, and me?
Yeah.
You're...
I believe.
And that's the only...
I believe, and I'll check my calendar and...
That would be the only thing on the agenda, you come prepared, you shouldn't have to make a career up.
And then I could pick some...
And you're not available.
I'm not available.
But if you could take the time to go over it and send a memo like maybe you did the last time, that we can take up the meeting. Does that sound all right?
Sounds good.
Chief?
Is anyone gonna, is this something that I can attend?
Something, it's 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 something. It's something, it's something, it's something, it's something, it's something, it's something. I would think that once we come up with a draft of where we think it should go, then we would certainly look for your input before we finalize it. But I'm perfectly open to input from anybody on the job description as we're working. I would think that once we come up with a draft of where we think it should go, then we would certainly look for your input before we finalize it. But I'm perfectly open to input from anybody on the job description as we're working forward. But it's somewhat, you gotta have to decide where the starting blocks are. I think that seems logical to me, is that you kind of rough it out and then we can reply from there. I understand the devil's always in the details.
Are you comfortable with...
Con... not comments.
Except track or jet?
Track.
Track changes?
Yeah.
So I'll write a little memo, but then I'll attach one. You guys can either work on it if you want electronically or use it as paper.
And Tom, do you think about the personnel board? Then you get it after that one?
I was just gonna say, depending on where we end up, I can contact for so.
Okay, did you see 28 hours? So maybe she can post a meeting on the 24th, just in case.
She posted at 6:30 on Tuesday, the 22nd, and it would be... And then 24.
The meeting on Thursday.
Right, but she posted at 6:30. That gives her the 48. So depending on our degree of success or failure, does that sound...
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, except the 24th, you know, I'm gonna tell you the 24th is a nightmare because I'll be at TCC.
But you...
That's what I was gonna say.
And if you want us to go, if we have consolidated version from the select board, then at least we can go over it and put our comments and be ready for the 28th. That's only hopefully going to be a small part of what we have to do.
All the news are gone. Sound good? That's what we'll do next meeting. I mean, I can see Mary and Aaron are just so excited.
There'll be more opportunities going forward too. It's not like it's gonna be finalized on the 24th. Not even close. It's just the rough out.
Especially if Todd and I have...
Very much.
All right, but Todd did get a copy two weeks ago.
Yeah, thank you for being gone.
Thanks. It's short and to the point.
And that's what I was going for.
And if we dash along to do it, it'll go back to the point.
A few pages. I was going for short and simple.
I have. Well, for the folks that are here that are interested...
I'm gonna read them.
You want to? Please?
Can I?
Sure.
So the first two are virtual identical. They're boilerplate to Senator Benjamin Downing and also to take it up from Stephen Cooley. And we read, "Dear Senator Downing, Representative Cooley," etc. "We are writing to thank you for attending our special town meeting conducted on June 23rd, 2014. We're also writing a response to the resolution voted on that evening by our citizens. Regarding the natural gas pipeline project as being proposed by Kinder Morgan, Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, we are confident that the sentiment and message from our townspeople is clear. Our citizens specifically voted to, quote, 'hereby instruct our state and federal legislatures and executive branch officials to enact legislation and take such actions as are necessary to prohibit this pipeline and hazardous condition in agendas from within the boundaries of Asheville,'" end quote. The citizens of Asheville oppose the proposed pipeline project and ask that you act on our behalf to prevent its construction. enclosed for your reference are copies of the articles of the Act. So that's to our state senator and rep. This one's to Congressman Neal, virtually the same verbiage, but even a ten. So we're writing to thank you for sending your representative, Dan Johnson, to attend a special town meeting, etc. Regarding the natural gas pipeline project that being proposed, etc., we're confident that Dan conveyed to you the sentiment, clear message from our townspeople and goes on to use the same language as the previous two. And then the fourth letter to Mr. Alan Foray, Foray, For, Director of Public Affairs, Kinder Morgan Energy Partners LP. We're writing a response to your email dated June 26th, 2014, regarding the natural gas pipeline project proposed by your subsidiary, Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company. On June 23rd, 2014, the citizens of Asheville, Mass. voted to oppose the proposed TGP pipeline through Asheville and neighboring communities. Considering this letter official notice that we hereby deny permission to TGP and any other agents of Kinder Morgan Energy Partners LP, its representatives, contractors, subcontractors, or associates to enter any town-owned land to perform surveys or for any other purpose in the furtherance of a pipeline construction project. If any such activities have begun, you are hereby notified to immediately cease and cease. Signed up for this one.
With copies going to...
Yeah, with copies going to Congressman Neal, Senator Downing, Representative Cooley.
That's great. That's a good point.
I have a question.
Yeah, no comment on the contractors, I believe it's Kinder Morgan, MLP, and Masco Limited, Masco Library.
Yeah, we didn't put that in.
MLP, no people.
So it's M as in Masco?
MLP. I will confirm that and make sure that...
Well, they're gonna be signing the letters now, they said, should we hold them? You don't need to change one person's account.
I couldn't email that email from down here where it states what their email says. The signature here, the electronic signature from Alan Foray, Foray, Foray? Says Kinder Morgan Energy Partners, comma, L, period, P, period.
That's what they put on there.
That's what he wrote, so.
So is there a motion? Well, we're gonna take care of it by signing, but we're all in agreement that these letters are appropriate. They need to be sent.
One?
You don't need a motion.
Who have their sign? Vote their signatures, actually.
I have a question. Do you need the governor to schedule a copy?
We didn't, but we tend to forward them to certain... I'll make a motion that we forward copies of these letters to Governor...
Those who say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we also include the people in Washington?
Is there anybody else we should include in the next motion to forward letters to... I think that's fine, but let's get along one shot.
It's endless. Fur, take out a whole page ad, New York Times.
We'll make sure to get this forwarded to the Asheville.
Nope, that one.
Just file a couple of documents.
Thank you for doing that.
I feel bad that we didn't do it faster, but it'd be alright. Answer a big time.
Mary, will those be registered, Mary? Have these two...
I can't, I wasn't...
Totally to the last four. I think it's a...
All right, now, third question on the Mohawk Trail Woodwork Partnership Advisory. Is there any representative appointment request?
Right, this is something that they sent to us last meeting, right, or did we give it before that? This has been an ongoing project for a couple of years, yeah.
A year.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the project where the U.S. Forest Service is involved in trying to get this whole national forest corridor down from this area, yeah? And they're asking for representatives of our community or a rap of our community.
I think just to enlighten you a little bit in maybe your background, FERC won a grant. That's why they're in front of us.
Got their name on it, yeah.
Yeah, and so they've gone out and taken all of the information. I've been to three of their meetings, Keith, the different poly, I went to different places to see what it was, and then it had it actually on there. And I think this is all part of their proposal to the MSF. And I think they have to somehow pull together and get representation from some of those...
As partner grant.
I think so, and I think it's all given in the...
So is your feeling and perspective that this isn't any sort of real action type item, it's more just something they need to do on paper?
Personally, I can't say that I agree with anything that's been presented for me. However, it's never good to be undecided on something that they're writing. Members, key members of the communities, they actually say they're going to the select board to participate, and I think we should have a voice there, really do it.
Question is, does a member of the select board or their people that are in the forestry business that would have a better voice and more knowledge on it than certainly than I do?
They asked to appoint a, we're asking at each town of the 20-town region, appoint a representative who could be in this class, a forest name on it, foresters in the business on the forest or other... They say it should wrap up in 90 words.
And didn't they give us a deadline to... I remember reading on somewhere that...
Three to four times.
No, 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 a deadline to appoint a representative.
Oh, I don't know if I saw...
I don't think there's any deadline.
No, there isn't a line 25.
Line 25, yeah. Line 25.
So we have a candidate in mind?
Well, there's a number of people in town who are involved in the forestry industry who could, but I haven't approached anyone. I don't know how interested anybody was. Was there any traction on it last year when they presented in town?
There were a lot of people that agreed, a lot of questions. And there were a few people strongly opposed to anything government-associated, you know? On this pipeline, I believe FERC is a big guy, right? They're the ones that is driving. And they're federal level regulators. So this is, in the current times, this isn't going to be real popular, I'm afraid. But Peggy Sloan, who's very involved with the planning of FERC, who's Ashfield words, we should have her shown, we definitely should have her shown. And I swore I invited all the stuff up there on my show, so I didn't do it. I think if someone was out there who didn't have their mind made up and was willing to listen, we'd really find someone, someone out there.
How about retired or someone who's moved on to another group that was a forester?
Sure.
You know, maybe.
Forestry company?
Well, there's two folks that live in town that I'd rather not mention their name until I've spoken to them.
Yeah, I do expect to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of them from town.
And that would live in the same house, but that's...
More crews, I need more crews.
And we may not be able to, maybe we'll be able to make this a plan next Monday to find an appropriate response.
Which is they first, yeah.
I mean, you're not volunteering, I don't want to push you up.
Well, if we can't get anybody else, I'll do it. I'd rather have somebody who's in the industry and the profession or a large landowner or somebody like that who has an actual vested financial stake in the process, which I don't have. So, but if nobody else wants to do it, at least the town should have some representation.
If it comes down to that, I'm willing to help out, so, not to jump in the way of you, but not to help out. The only thing I ask is that if it isn't someone who enjoyed meeting up with my son, we're looking at someone who wants to engage in the process.
Think and understand both sides of the situation.
That's what I was saying. Look, maybe, you know, a forester could be fine, but I'll report that. Thanks for doing that. And hopefully that can get on the agenda for a Monday meeting, if that's right, for the 21st.
Even though I said the only thing that we're going to discuss is that if we go back to the 25th. Not that we would ever be a few days late, but take care of the 28th, that's true. All right?
Would you be okay with one more thing on that meeting on the 21st or 2nd, that engineer contract? It's just one of the...
21st, the engineer contract for...
The time of the engineer for Smith, for this would be June 21st, just the engineering.
Do sign that and do that.
Hey, you have to sign the... Pieces of, this is for a particular piece of the, next piece of the project.
Now, we're getting three things, and these other two would be very short.
Very short.
We'd like us to take care of minutes, which would only take months. All right, these are the points.
I have no problem. The only thing I have to report, just because it's a focus meeting, I feel someone would need to do that first, I'll engrave and send this and I forward it to you guys.
Yes.
If you pass this down, that they're gonna be doing some investigation up at the old, at the field wall, some drilling, Mary. And when, and people will see big trucks up there, you know, the kinds of boom that go up and they drop down and they're doing geotechnical work. So be aware of these dates because people will be calling and so on and so forth. Okay, I'm sure.
I didn't know, did you know this, Mary?
Uh, no. I know this to the select board and to Mary.
It's not a pipeline.
It's not a pipeline. This is the structural analysis associated with the retention law of the old San Antonio. So a few, few.
Can I change something?
That was a...
I don't have anything with the head and I already discussed already, yeah. Anything in particular in the mail that needs to be brought up? I know you have busy the other thing. Oh, there's a letter from Town Council to the town chairman's office correcting, correcting a couple of errors that were in response to some old mail off the line, having to do This is from May 79, we've got a foot in the letter to you using the date of May 25th as the extension date and the date of the select order meeting, this is an aggregate, the select order meeting until May 19th. And, just a correction to the Attorney General on that. And supporting documentation of minutes on that thing. There's another answer from Town Council to Attorney General's Office discussing a complaint from Deborah Mendelson, dated June 16th. Again, correcting, there's nothing else correcting, the date notice of the Asheville Forest Select Meeting of May 19th. It's to answer that. And then, this is in our original count, right? It was, there was an answer from the Division of Open Government to Suzanne Corbett about per open meeting law complaint, honor about March 25th. Your complaint may be resolved through the formal or informal action. We will attempt, we will attempt to resolve the matter by speaker to the virus. So, there's more to come on that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I think that's the question, sort of a finance related question here. I'm not, well, if it's just a date that has to be changed in one of these things, as those two papers that we just read have a date that was changed because the meeting was hyper on, why doesn't it just be changed rather than having to go to Town Council and paying for the change?
Because it's been our policy to take these and just turn them over to Town Council and make sure that they're taken care of.
Isn't that a kind of a little waste, right?
And then, just so everybody knows, remember we were dealing last year, a year ago, with Nexant? Well, now they are New Gen Capital, acquisition there. Says pursuant to Section 3.2 of our Energy and Net Need and Credit Purchase and Sale Agreement, we are pleased to notify that you, to notify you that the solar facility located at Mill Valley Road in Hadley will have a commercial operation date as defined in the PPA of July 2nd, 2014. We did get the official notification on that at our last meeting, but we would say that maybe the switch was on or going on, and I was saying that I expected the nickels and dimes to be flying through the windows in any minute from the money that we're going to save. Which chain is going to be, when it's up and going, it should be, when we said, seen those drills with the 27% discount, it'll be especially the list what I'm figuring about. So, good, good. Wonderful when the plan comes together.
Yeah, there, I didn't see here once that I'm writing this stuff for you guys.
You may ask. I have a question, Mary.
Right. Just because I went through my folder when we got here the first time, and on the 6:30 minutes, I see that a lot of support for Andrew Smith relative to opposing the town name from Julia Jayden, but in the same pile of stuff as the minutes, there were six or seven more letters against it also. So, I think that what we should do in fairness is either, if someone's not on the agenda and we're not really keeping track, we should do the same thing for both the opposition and the support in favor of them.
Yeah, and I don't know if that matters any difference between hard letters that were ran here versus letters that were called.
But these were, I mean, I'm looking at hard letters, Preston Brown wrote a hard letter, along with Andrew, but Preston Brown recently adopted, just, you know? So, either, and I'm seeing them come on both sides, threshold that way.
Yeah.
Either leave them out completely unless they're on the agenda, could be fair to both sides.
Yeah, I didn't hear any minutes today because I was, it's sort of something, it's just about two of them, but not about all of them.
Yeah, it's just, it was over two who were in favor.
Of course.
And I'm not stating my position, I'm just saying in fairness to those people who are writing and very passionate on both sides of this thing, we should treat them the same.
Absolutely, and I'm just a little confused why there was a difference, but I guess I'd have to go back and look at my folder and see.
And because neither of you, we're all in that too, so. Be aware of that.
If they were in her folder, they were all, if they were in everybody's folder, and so I'd have to go back and try to see what the difference was.
I'm not asking to make a change.
It was all about something.
Going forward, let's try to defer to both sides.
I think we need to keep those, because at some point, some, some point, it's still going to have to come up on the agenda and make a final decision on this.
It does, and I get a follow-up, please go to we casting, with that, and this definitely, this definitely, so, that's something.
Until we shovel through some of the rest of this, that's pretty low on my priorities.
I agree.
Although it does remind.
I mean, our thing is lower on my priorities, just don't get me wrong, but.
It does remind me that, when I was here late in the day, Friday, that call, as it happens, Christopher Ray, somebody from the IT committee, they downstairs, and they pushed the town hall up to the fire rock, so you are set for that.
I did, I got an email.
Did you? Okay.
It seems like every time I think that the letters are slowing down, there's another purse that I get into those stuffs. It's tough to say when the feedback is going to stop.
Okay, couple of comments, we've had quite a lot of that tonight. Is there any of it? Okay, we're going to move on to, our next board meeting, we changed this, that was July 28th, but now it's going to be the 21st.
And before you move on to the next thing after that, I want to sign a thing about?
What do you got?
Sorry, it's just a state needs do-over on the first sheet of the standard contract form that you've already signed because.
A do-over?
Just the, just the top sheet I brought, which you've done before, to show they changed to the funding number. So, it's their change, funding number, they just want to decide as you decide.
They made a bigger. Yeah?
Uh, the money?
No. What's the change?
No, the, the change is the federal fund number. The money's coming out.
Three hundred, oh, oh, there it is coming out. It's still $375,000 for Smith Ranch. Have we shown?
And this is just?
Have we shown they get this right this time?
I don't know.
Who revisited these quite often?
I think so.
As long as you have a bunch of some.
Yeah, it was just a, they changed.
We voted to sign this before and accept this money, there's no, we haven't had any change of heart, it's still going to be other things.
I think this piece is going to have a left flag of do-over to do right.
Mary, look under the 6:30 minutes, and you do say lots of letters and emails were very kind of most simple of four, so, so I apologize, I didn't pick that one.
That's it?
Yes.
Just two signatures?
Yes.
Got it. All right. Now, we're talking about the executive session. You've got to do this exactly right. And so, one thing I'm going to want into it, to discuss a strategy with respect to litigation. Michael F. Curtis versus the town of Asheville, as discussion in open view may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. That's what's printed on our agenda. The meeting must be convened in an open, posted session, okay? I just stayed with, Chair states the purpose for the executive session, stating all subjects that may be revealed without compromising the purpose of the executive session. So, we've got to say this just right, Todd, so we have a following. So, reasons for convening executive session. Number three on this list is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. But you have to say that, and the chair so declares, so I'm declaring that. You didn't know there was so much power. Yes. Yeah, yeah. Right, Mary? We have to stay, we are not reconvening. It says, the chair announces whether the meeting will re, whether the meeting will reconvene in open session.
Right, so you could also say the meeting will not.
So, right, so we, my position is we will not reconvene in an open session. So, now we have to have a majority vote recorded in a roll call. So. In a second, okay? My second. So.
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call. Todd Allen.
Aye.
Thomas Carter.
Aye.
And then I'm supposed to announce that we will not reconvene in open session. All right?